I'd like to call to order the school board meeting on March the 10th at 7:11. Let's, I mean, yeah, 7:11. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice in all.
Mr. Lega, welcome.
Mrs. Issam.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschko.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Neemek.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovar.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a camera mounted present.
Thank you, Mr. Lega. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 10th, 2014?
Sure.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Neemek.
Okay, question being called for. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Information, Dr. Harris.
Sure, we're gonna start off with our student union representative, Lucas Johnson.
Hello, everyone. This is my favorite to talk about the sports, winter sports have come to conclusion as the Lady Warriors wrestling and swim team had a fantastic season. The Lady Warriors finished off the season with an overall record of 13-1. Also wanted to congratulate Maria Pallarina as she was selected as the Player of the Year. Wrestling has also concluded with an awesome season. Congratulations to Cameron Coy on capturing the WPIL class triple A title in the 132-pound weight class on Saturday. Student Union, last week, student union had sold shamrocks and all lunches for $1. Students wrote an appropriate message on the shamrocks and they are to be placed around the school, to be found by the person they wrote about. Their donations will be donated to the American Heart Association. The prom is right around the corner and is clearly seen. To start off March, the guys have begun to ask the girls to prom and the girls are constantly kicking off about their prom dresses, of course. The Warrior Cast Sashes this month, Warrior Cast Sashes is kicking off a promotion for spring. The package will include two Pirates tickets for Saturday, April 5th, and a Visa gift card for travel expenses to the game. The next promotion to be seen will be by far the biggest one yet. It will include multiple different raffles for members and non-members upon joining. The high school has started their annual food drive. It will benefit local food banks such as Saint Barbara, Trafford Level Green, and the Community United Methodist Church. These organizations provide food for 250 local families. The drive will conclude April 7th. Is there any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Lucas.
All right, next we have our favorite part of the meeting is the Student of the Month. And we're gonna start off with Harrison Park, Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. It's my honor to introduce Maria Shultes as Harrison Park's Student of the Month. Where are you able to come up? Maria is the daughter of Elizabeth Danello and Adam Shultes. She has two older sisters, sitting behind me, Bella and Anna, who attend Penn Middle. Maria is an honor roll student who participates in the Spectrum program. She has completed in various competitions through Spectrum such as Invention Convention, Science Bowl, County Solve, History Bowl, and is currently working on a STEM project for a competition for the spring. Her teachers describe her as unique, creative, a problem solver, a leader, someone you can count on to do the right thing, a hard worker, and a pleasure to have in class. One of her teachers, Mr. Homann, states that she is a total package because of her overall strength as a student, a classmate, and a leader. Academically, Maria always strives to do her best. One of her finest qualities is her ability to work through something tough until she finally understands the concept or gets the correct answer. Along the way, she is not afraid to learn from her mistakes, an important quality to any student. As a classmate, Maria is a very unselfish person and she has a very keen sense of right and wrong. Maria has an uncommon ability for anyone of her age to understand how to deal with different classmates in different situations and handle those situations with reason and maturity. As a leader, Maria is quick to take charge. She earns the group's trust through her hard work and positive energy. Maria is a wonderful young lady, an outstanding student, and a pleasure to have at the school. On behalf of the staff of Harrison Park, I'd like to congratulate Maria for being the Elementary Student of the Month.
I see you're interested in STEM projects?
Yeah.
You think you'd grow up to be an engineer?
Hopefully.
You know, we need more women in science. Go for it.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Mr. Simpson from Penn Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. I'd like to call Ben Ikey. Our middle school, March Middle School Student of the Month is Benjamin Ikey. He is the son of Rochelle Rizzo and Robert Ikey, grandson of Paul and Sandy Rizzo, and older brother of Tanner Ikey. Ben's parents share that Ben has always been a bigger boy compared to other kids, but he's always had a gentle spirit. He's grown to be compassionate, conscientious, and has a tremendous work ethic. Ben's educational path has not always been an easy one. He's had to work twice as hard as some other students in his grade level. But somehow, somewhere during the middle school years, this all turned around for him. He found teachers that believed in him and he gave, and gave him the foundation and support that required along, that also required a gifted tutor. And then the switch was flipped. High honor roll and straight A's on his report cards have become a regular occurrence. Like other children, Ben has to deal with family issues that could have broken his stride. But with the contribution and support of his family, he has fought through these issues and has come out well adjusted and successful. Ben played major football for the Penn PTMA since '86 and has played on the middle school football team for two years. This past season, a knee injury put an end to his football career. Overcoming another obstacle, Ben has found a new interest with comic books and video games. This passion, along with recently meeting one of his heroes, comic book author Stan Lee, wow, has given him the desire to one day write his story, write storylines for video games. Ben's brother Tanner says he is a good big brother and they play video games together and he shows him how to cook. Overall, he's a pretty good big brother and we get along most of the time, he says, quote unquote. Benjamin's perseverance, creativity, personality, and zest for life will allow him to achieve any goal that he sets for himself. His mom says that he's the type of young man that any parent would be proud to call son. Ben's teachers chose Ben because of how dedicated he is to education and peer mentoring. Ben goes above and beyond what is asked of him. Even when he is finished with his work in study hall, he will come to his teachers and ask for extra math problems to work on so that he can practice because he knows that math is an area that he struggles with and he wants to become better. Ben is a great motivator with his peers. When they use study hall time to complete work, he makes sure they are focused and the students look up to him. He is very helpful when the students need help with technology. Ben's goal for this year was to move from Read 180 to eighth grade literature and language arts. He worked very hard in Read 180 and was always looking for ways to improve himself. We're able to move Ben into a regular literature and language arts class for the second semester. He's doing very well in that class. Every one of Ben's teachers have commented on how well he's doing in their classes. Some of the comments include, "He's such a positive and conscientious young man. He's a delight to have in class. He's extremely respectful and has a tremendous attitude." I've never seen him without a smile on his face. I agree with that. He's always smiling. Ben has steadily improved his academics since the year he's progressed. His improvement can be directly attributed to the internal motivation he has to improve and reach his potential. With all these positive comments, I'm proud to recognize Benjamin Ikey as the March Penn Middle School Student of the Month.
Congratulations, Ben. And how did you meet, what was his name, Stan Lee?
Yes, I met him at New Orleans Comic Con.
Oh, you met him in New Orleans?
Yeah, my dad lives there.
Oh, great. Well, good luck to you. We're proud of you.
And finally, we have Mr. Cap from the high school, President of the High School Student of the Month.
Sure. Aubrey, come up front. It's my honor to introduce Aubrey Gore as the Penn Trafford High School Student of the Month. She is accompanied tonight by Mrs. Gore, her mother, grandparents, Mr. and Mrs. Glass, Mrs. Lochner, student aide, Mrs. Enick, a teacher at the high school, and Mrs. Rush, a job coach also at the high school. Aubrey is 11th grade student at the high school. She has made many accomplishments with her time here at the high school. She also holds, currently holds a 3.48 GPA. When Aubrey first came to the high school, she was very shy and questioned herself and her abilities. Since then, Aubrey has exceeded everybody's expectations. She is outgoing and very confident. She has had accomplishments in both social and work settings. Aubrey began working in the coffee shop right behind me here, Coffee for a Cause, her freshman year. She was one of the first employees at the coffee shop and she quickly learned all the different skills on how to work in a job setting. Throughout the years, Aubrey has been able to move working at the coffee shop and serving customers during her sophomore year. She was also successful with placement. She has began interacting with customers and developing friendships in the process. She has also began working using the register. She has also made great strides socially when she joined the Penn Trafford Girls Field Hockey Team. When returning for her junior year, she began work-study placement at RCW. Then she landed a job as a position as a dishwasher at the Westmoreland Country Club. This is a career she has an interest in, which is the food service industry. Aubrey has most recently been employed at Eaton Park and is also part of her work-study program. She is also working in the Penn Trafford High School cafeteria. A few words to describe her from her teachers, responsible, hardworking, eager to learn, substantial growth socially and academically, and very self-confident. On behalf of the Penn Trafford High School, I would like to congratulate Aubrey for being Student of the Month.
Congratulations, Aubrey. So, what would you like to do in food service? Do you know yet? You're thinking about it? Well, good. Maybe we'll see you down at Eaton Park someday in Irwin. We go there.
I'd like to give the press a chance to take a picture of our Students of the Month. If the Students of the Month, you please come over here to the photo. And the parents also want to take a photo.
Do you have anything else I had under information, and I don't know if he's here tonight, Mr. Mueller from Trafford?
I didn't see him.
Trafford Level Green Association.
I didn't see him.
Tonight, we're actually approving, we talked about this last week and we said he might show up. We are, is on the board to approve the dugouts. Remember, their organization has donated the dugouts completely to Trafford Elementary and Middle School Baseball Field at no cost to the district. So, I thought he was gonna come and talk about it, but, all right, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Dr. Harris. It's now time for audience recognition. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president and no participant may address or question a board member individually. They may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant. Is there any, well, actually, we have someone, I should say. Do we have one?
Thank you, Sally Riley, 827, State Route 130 in Level Green. And I have three things I'd like to comment. I hope that will do my time. First thing is to congratulate Dr. Harris for being appointed Superintendent of Penn Trafford Schools and demand the school board for appointing me up as Superintendent. So, congratulations. Secondly, this is the most important thing I'm saying. I was so proud and happy with our students in Coffee for a Cause. As I mentioned in January, face in action was to be the recipient. And I'm at that time thinking, yeah, if we get $50 to $100, that's $50 or $100 I don't need to worry about along with others raising. How amazed, astonished, surprised, whatever, to receive a check for $1,000. I mean, it was just like overwhelming. So, I'm really thanking those young people, and Aubrey was one of the students we met when we had a picture taken with them about two weeks ago. And also want to thank the other students of Penn Trafford because they had to purchase the item for us to get the money. And these students, they were so pleasant. They knew what they were doing. They were polite. They explained all functions of the Coffee for a Cause program, how they did inventory, what they did. They were baking cookies while we were there. And how they did the inventory and then went to Sam's Club to buy the items. So, they were just a great bunch of students. So, I want to thank all of Penn Trafford for that. The third item, and bear with me as I create the scenario for my question. Assuming that all of our bonds people and architects get all the timeframes right for Plan Con in Harrisburg, then hopefully, we have some miracle that means Plan Con money is available. Secondly, what if all the 75 school districts ahead of us have their time with Plan Con? Then we have our time of judgment. My question is, will all of our, all of our projects, rather than the beginning or the add-ons, would they all be eligible for Plan Con money if it comes into existence? And Mr. Petrusi, I think you'll remember what I'm gonna talk about. When we renovated Penn Middle School, when it came down to the size of the gym, Plan Con limited the size. And there were groups in the community that were willing to raise money to help us make it larger, but we weren't allowed because Plan Con said if you made it larger, we lost all the money for the gym. So, obviously, we didn't. So, that's my question. Would all of our initial projects and the add-ons qualify for Plan Con? And I don't know if you can answer that, Tony, or not, and, but maybe you can refer it to someone who can't.
I was just going to.
And I'm not putting you down that you can't answer, but I wouldn't be able to answer it either.
Well, I'll address a little bit of that.
Okay, thank you.
Some things aren't reimbursable. You can't have two auditoriums. You can't have two cafeterias. You can't have two gymnasiums. But they did change the rules, say you can have auxiliary gym. That's why we had the one, we put that in, we got reimbursed for that at Penn Middle School. Auxiliary gym here, I assume, again, Plan Con has changed since we've got a new governor.
Right.
Okay, things I don't know what, there's been slashers, some districts, and I'm assuming they try to get their money. It's really, it's chaotic, it's coming down here. But their whole idea is, you know, you can't have, you can't have two libraries, you know, one library.
Right.
That was the whole idea of why they, Plan Con, that's what you recall, we did all, there was always inspections, you know, every, twenty months inspection, they'd come by, they'd make sure you do everything right. And how does that work?
They, the state comes, that was labor and industry. They came by on a regular basis to inspect the building.
That's how the wage, the local inspectors will be, will be doing that. Plan Con, don't they, they report to Plan Con.
Will have their reviews with the drawings of the certain.
And they reimburse accordingly as it was done. But right now, there's no, there's no Plan Con, but there's still prevailing wage, which still drives me crazy. I can't do, but that, what you were saying is absolutely correct.
Yeah, 'cause I was just wondering the items I was wondering about, like the skylight is gonna be here that somehow's up, which I don't understand it, so I'm saying it's my stupidity. But somehow it's on the second floor, but it's gonna, so it won't leak into the library if it leaks, but it'll give us sunlight. I don't understand that, but that's my, my weakness. But I was just wondering, like, is that, do we think that would be getting funds?
There isn't, there isn't anything that's designed for the high school project that's part of the high school building that is, that is not, that's going to be rejected from the Plan Con.
Yeah, but you can't, also, you can't. Two store rooms.
Right.
Much as this thing, we can't have two store rooms.
Five minutes. Thank you, Nick.
I talked to our state legislator last week, George Dunbar, you know, what is the status of Plan Con? I think this was last Thursday, maybe, Wednesday, Thursday? And he says he still doesn't know.
How about prevailing wage? You talked to about that.
You know, I did not. I had a very limited time, but you know, I should have talked about that.
It's so important, because we're so close to construction.
I know. And as far as Coffee for a Cause, as you all know, we love sports in our family, but that is my favorite thing in high school, is the Coffee for a Cause. It's a great group of kids. I think it's just a wonderful program. Yeah.
That's really bossy.
Yes, it's a wonderful program. All right, that is it. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay, may I, yeah, may I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular fund report?
Second. Motion by Mr. Petrusi, second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of March?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Petrusi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Any old business, Dr. Harris?
We have none to see.
Okay, any, okay, executive session. There is not a need for us to have a break at this time. We had an executive session prior to this meeting, which is why we were about seven, eight minutes late. We received information about some PTARQ issues and a proposed middle school curriculum. We discussed personnel matters, specifically hiring, job announcements, and some current legal matters regarding personnel. And we also discussed a confidential student matter. Okay, moving on to new business. Dr. Koschko, athletics and extracurricular.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to employ the following athletic personnel effective immediately. Reemployment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation with acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Nick Mastriani, junior high assistant baseball coach, and Philip Moses, assistant track coach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following volunteer coach is effective immediately. All coaching volunteers must have Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers on file with the athletic director. John DiMaria, volunteer boys volleyball coach. Sean Manning, volunteer boys assistant volleyball coach.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard, question.
Question being called for. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
And finally, move to approve the following intern assignment. Slippery Rock, carey hatrick intern is Paul Asman in internship sports management. For the dates listed.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell, question.
Question being called for. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That'll be all, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koschko. Mr. Kachasik, budget and finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to approve the general operating budget for the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number Seven for the fiscal year July 1st, 2014 to June 30th, 2015, a total amount of $4,794,290. The Penn Trafford School District's contribution will be $35,713.84.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell, question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve expenditures relating to the high school renovation project for the month of February 2014 according to the schedule as listed below.
Second by Dr. Trey, question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the purchase of Apple computers for the Penn Trafford High School at a cost of $429,739.35. This cost is part of the high school renovation project.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That is all, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Mr. Leonard, buildings and ground safety.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve the request of the Trafford Level Green Athletic Association to construct four dugouts, two each at the two baseball fields at the Trafford Elementary Middle School at no cost to the district.
Second.
Second by Mr. Petrusi, question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Neemek, employee relations, negotiations, transportation.
Thank you, Madam President. Would like to advise the public that the Board of School Directors has been negotiating with the Penn Trafford Education Association pursuant to Act 88 as the educator's current contract concludes on June 30th, 2014. And that is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Neemek. Food service, Dr. Trey.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one item. I was recently invited to attend the student advisory meeting for the Arumark at the high school, at the end of this month.
Thank you, Dr. Trey.
It's all ahead.
Thank you. Personnel and curricula, Mr. Petrusi.
Thank you, Madam President. With his beautiful family sitting behind me, his wife Anna, his daughter Haley, and his son Daniel, move to employ Mr. Scotting as the Assistant Superintendent effective July 1, 2014 at the annual $128,145. The contract will extend from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2017. The annual contract is for 12 months and includes all fringe benefits covered by administrative compensation plan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Newell, question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of a motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Congratulations, Mr. Neemek.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I do want to thank the board for your support. And I think it's a great group of people here, always has the best interest of kids in mind. And, you know, I just look forward to working for you and thank you for your support. Dr. Harris, thank you. I think, thank you for your support. And I think we're gonna make a great team. We look forward to many years here. Good things happening at Penn Trafford. You know, I got a great group of administrators sitting around the table here, good people here I've worked with for many years, and they're good people. I know that they'll be very supportive in what we try to do. I've had great teachers in the high school. Many retired, many are still there. But without them, without the hard work and dedication that they have, you know, put forth for all those years, I wouldn't be where I'm at in success, the successes that we've had at the high school. We've done some great things with those teachers. So, it's been a team effort, and I thank everybody for everything. I thank you for support. Definitely want to thank my wife Anna and my two kids, Haley and Daniel. There have been many, many days and evenings without me, and Anna had to step up to the plate to thank you. I do appreciate that. So, it's just, I can tell you that, and I say this all the time, it's, it's an honor and privilege to work for this district. It's a great place to be. It's a great place to work. You know, I came here 13 years ago, and I think Mr. Petrusi was probably the only board member here at the time. And that was under Dr. Morasty who, who gave me a chance and gave me the opportunity to be where I'm at today. So, it's just, it's been a long road, and I look forward to 10 or 15 more years. It's a great district, and I'm very proud to be here. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, and congratulations.
My suggestion, and I just want to say, Newell's gone almost his entire life because he graduated our one son and the family and known Anna from Norris Senior High School. Anna's family real well, and all pluses, all pluses. It's always been a positive kid, bright kid, and worked well with everybody, got along well with everybody in the neighborhood. This was a real good person. Tell you the other story, too, whenever he first got his job down in Virginia, and Anna was down there, too, and he kept on asking, "What's his Auntie Mottessic like?" And I said, "She's a sweet kid." Sure as heck, within a year or two years, we ended up getting married. And it's really nice and, Anna's a real good if you remember, her father was our principal, Pat, for I think 12 years, Anna? Pat was principal 12 years?
I think.
More?
No, maybe 10. You might be overselling us.
That's her mother speaking.
And that's her.
And a great, he's been very dedicated, puts in a lot of hours, he's always visible and always convenient for everybody, responds every time you talk to him. and always convenient for everybody, responds every time anyone, any questions answered. And much success to both of you. We have a young, I think, a real strong, young team with some bright ideas, and all I see is positive everywhere. Okay, move to approve additional substitute teacher support personnel for the month of March 2014. Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following pre-student teacher assignment. My U.P., cooperating professional Brenda Christify. I hope I did that right. Crystal A. Student/teacher Melissa Honer, subject art. Dates is 35 to 40 hours of observation, March 2014 to May 2014. Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 151, 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Heather McElroy, paraprofessional Penn Middle School, effective March 11th, 2014, for $10.05 an hour. Angela Thixton, three-hour PCA, moving to a six-and-a-half-hour position at Level Green, effective March 6, 2014, at $10.05 an hour. Second.
Question. Second by Mr. Noel.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
Move to approve the following unpaid FMLA leave request, automaphasia, paraprofessional Penn Middle School, intermittently between March 30th, 2014, and April 4th, 2014. Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following retirement resignation effective at the end of 2013-14 school year, and all these people have been very dedicated to us in academic order. Karen Brown, James Costelli, Dave Burnett, Nancy Ferguson, Rosemary Knapp, Vivian Light, Ellen Lochner, Susan McCain, Beverly Rubrite, and George N. Stevens. Second.
Question. Second. Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I hope this is the last one of these I have to read. Move to approve the following make-up day. School closed due to inclement weather, Monday, February 3, 2014. Make-up day. Monday, April 21, 2014. Act 80, students do not report. Second.
Second by Mr. Noel.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Policy Public Relations Legislative, Title II. Mr. Noel.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to accept and file the minutes of the Superintendent's Information Committee meeting held on Monday, February 3, 2014. Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to give final approval for the following revised policies and administrative regulations presented to the board. A copy of these policies and regulations will be made part of the official minutes, and they are listed below. Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the Student Assistance Program Agreement for the 2014-2015 school year between the Penn Trafford School District, the Westmoreland County Drug and Alcohol Commission, and the Westmoreland County Behavioral Health and Developmental Services Program. The district agrees to cooperate in the developmental, development of the Student Assistance Program Initiative in accordance with current Student Assistance Program guidelines of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Second.
Second by Mr. Katsasik.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.